This is rescheduled from the Great Race, which was last Tuesday, which was a big success. I'll talk about that in a little bit, but first roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Here.
Mr. Coleman.
Here.
Ms. Matroni.
Here.
Mr. McCarthy.
Here.
Mr. Smith.
Here.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Here.
Mr. Weber.
Here.
If you're able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
United States of America. The Republic of the United States. One nation, under God, indivisible, created in a single accord.
Minutes of the council meeting June 7.
Thank you, Mayor. I do have a copy of the minutes, and I believe everyone has received a copy of those. So unless there's any objections, we consider it the Parisburg City Council meeting June 7.
Thank you. Special reports, we have no special reports, letters, communications, citizens' concerns. If citizens have any concerns not related to a specific item that's on the agenda, I'll take a microphone. Yep, taking that as a no. All right, administrative report. Well, I'll lead with the best thing. And there's lots of good things, but I'll go lead with the best thing. It was, I'd like to acknowledge Judy Hagan and present her with a proclamation. It will save everybody from all the wear asses, but basically, everybody knows Judy knows. She worked tirelessly for the city of Parisburg to make it a better place, to look nicer, and also to be a nicer place, and a political part of the community, and has started and continued a lot of programs that have really made a difference, from yard waste to recycling to the fishing derby, to clean the parks every year. And we've got lots of people who compliment us on our, how Clean the Parks work, look every spring, and that is because of her tireless efforts to organize and get that happen. So I am ecstatic to be able to present her with a presentation that she can read on her own time to see how wonderful she really is.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
With some hesitations, let her say anything. Yeah, that's why I'm here. You want to say anything?
Well, no, but it's been a privilege to work for this city for 26 years.
Please come to the microphone. You're in the spotlight, too.
I have to say that.
Say something to them.
Judy Hagan, 10741 Avenue Road. It's been a privilege 26 years. It's been fun. And today was the first time in 26 years I had to sign in as a visitor to the municipal building. It's kind of a sad thing, but in a way, it's a glad thing. So I thank you for working with all of you, and it's been a wonderful 26 years.
Judy, I just want, yeah, I can't not say something. Judy, before I got involved in the city, I would just, I would hear mostly John Echols say, Judy did this, Judy did it, Judy. I never knew who Judy was. I obviously thought he was made up because there can't be one person that does that many things. But then, since I've been involved in the city, it's just been such a pleasure to get to know you and find out just what, everything you've done, and it was fun working with you, too.
Thank you so much.
Saturdays, so, thank you.
The rest of the mayor's report. The Great Race was last week, and it was a big success. And on behalf of the city, I want to thank the Convention and Visitors Bureau and Christine Best for all of her hard work, and the same with the Chamber of Commerce, working together to make that possible. Also, all the efforts of the sponsors that contributed. There are so many sponsors, I'm not going to list them all, but it couldn't have happened without the sponsors and all the volunteers. And many of the council members, hard work and diligence, helping feed the racers. Everybody chipped in, and I think that's a testament to why Parisburg is a great place to live, and that everybody was willing to do whatever needed to be done. Consistent with that, on Sunday, we also had recognized, League of Women Voters recognized three groups, three, two individuals and one group for all they do for the city of Parisburg, the Ted Close Line, the Teen Tims, for the service they provide to those in need.
You are the only participant in the conference.
It's a good thing.
Please press any key on your keypad to remain in the conference.
Vicki Gallagher, who does a lot of urban gardening and has started a whole bunch of initiatives. And that's really made a difference to the community, and also Rick Ruffner, for all he does on Friday nights, and he also contributed to making the Great Race a big success. So it's my pleasure to do that as well. I'd also report that we swore in four new police officers this Monday, which is always a great event, to see the police officers with their families, and to see them fit into teams, so we're excited to have them onboard. We're also excited to see their families, because it's a team effort. So with that, I have one more step. I would like to appoint Jack Nag, Parisburg High School student who survived, is a freshman basketball coach, to serve on the litter prevention and recycling board. Student term begins this month and expires next year. He's already met with the service committee, and they voted 3-0 to appoint him to the position, and he really is an outstanding young man. So I'm excited to recommend him to the rest of the council and to serve on the committee. I'll make the motion to approve. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni. Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Thank you. City Administrator.
I don't have a report, but I also would like to thank Ms. Hagan. I remember my first encounter with her. She came into my office, and I think she had a binder like this big. And she went through every program and service, and all the services, the recycling. I've learned so much about her from recycling that it's, I still can't retain everything. And every time I look at her spreadsheet, Judy, I'll think of you, and I'll have to call you because you had that down and the analytics down, and I can never quite remember what your formulas meant. So look out, I may be calling you in the near future.
Finance Director.
No report.
Law Director.
No report.
President of Council.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to echo your statements on the Great Race. That was a phenomenal event. I know Councilman Weber and I both got to meet with a county commissioner from New Jersey as well. But we had every, I think I saw probably every one of us up there, out and about, people volunteering and helping, and how great of an event that was and what the Visiting Convention Bureau has worked through and everyone else that really worked hard to put that together. And Judy, thanks again for all your work, and hopefully, we give you an application to get on one of our boards. I don't think you're done yet. So that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Committee reports. Finance.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Finance and Economic Development Committee met June 14, 2022. Meeting was called to order at 5:30 PM by Chairman Mark Weber. Committee members present were myself and Jonathan Smith. Committee Member Tim McCarthy was not present. Also present were Amber Rathburn, Finance Director, Kayla Trago, Deputy Finance Director, and Kate Sandretto, Law Director. There were no objections, so we, minutes of April 12th, meeting was approved. Certificate of Estimated Revenues. Ms. Rathburn explained that this is a housekeeping item and that every year they have to submit to Wood County their estimated balances for the end of the current year, and then an estimate of what they think they will collect the following year. This is due by July 20, 2022, so Ms. Sandretto would like this legislation passed as an emergency. There being no objections, the committee is recommending this 2-0 to City Council. Property and Liability Insurance Renewal. Ms. Rathburn explained that she was expecting to get three quotes, but only received one proposal from Highland, which the city has been with since 2004. She added that a lot of other cities in the area are insured by them as well. Ms. Rathburn explained that the rate only went up 3%. However, they look at the budget, number of employees, and property values, which have all gone up. This means that the increase of $21,014 is not only due to the rate, but what the city has insured. With this renewal policy, there are two improvements in coverage. Police vehicles would be replaced at current replacement value, and the city will receive rebates through Lexapro. Ms. Rathburn added that the city is at $1 million for cyber liability insurance, which is the most they can get through Highland. She has submitted an application for coverage for social engineering to see what amount the city could get. Mr. Smith stated that municipalities are one of the number of targets, the number-one targets when it comes to cyber attacks. Mr. Smith asked if there is any additional coverage we could add on for excess cyber liability coverage. Ms. Rathburn will see what other companies Highland works with and how they could integrate additional coverages together. There being no objections, the committee is recommending this 2-0 to City Council. The Finance Director's report, Mr. Smith wanted to know about the large income tax payment that the city had received, and if there are any updates on this, and will need to be refunded. Ms. Rathburn answered that there are still not any updates on that and that they're still waiting to hear back from the state. There were two large, this is due, there were two large prior receipts totaling 1.4 million in question. So year-to-date figures on the monthly tax report are high by that amount. Ms. Rathburn explained, but I had asked, she explained, I had asked if they could have a, oh, no, stop at that, period. I, Mark Weber, had asked if they could have a column stating in a resolution or ordinance, if a resolution ordinance was passed for the items on the expenditures over the $5,000 report that we go over monthly. And Ms. Rathburn said that, yes, they will be adding this with the new software system. It makes our job a lot easier just to remember what these expenses were, they originated. A lot of times, they came through council. In other business, Mr. Smith wanted to talk about the bill regarding Airbnbs. Ms. Sandretto will do some research regarding this. I and Mr. Smith added that we just talked about this with Parisburg CBB Board. Ms. Sandretto explained that this is discussed internally pretty regularly, and the code is already drafted, so it becomes a monitoring issue. There being no further business, the meeting is adjourned at 5:52 PM. And so I have one resolution and one ordinance to introduce. I would like to introduce Resolution 53-2022 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 53-2022, authorizing the purchase of insurance through Ohio Plan Risk Management, Inc. at a cost not to exceed $186,144 and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 53-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
I would like to introduce Ordinance 41-2022 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Ordinance 41-2022, an ordinance authorizing submission of an estimate of revenues to the Wood County Budget Commission for the budget year beginning January 1, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
I move that Ordinance 41-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Okay, the next meeting for Finance and Economic Development is scheduled for Tuesday, July 12, at 5:30 PM. May or may not happen, I get back in town in time, but also, we may or may not have agenda items. So stay tuned. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Safety Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There is no report. Our next scheduled meeting will be July 26, at 6:00 PM.
Thank you. Recreation.
Thank you, Mayor. We do have a report here. We met on June 14 at 6:35 PM with myself, Barry Van Hoozen, and Corey Coleman present. Also present was Kate Sandretto, excuse me, our Law Director, and Brody Walters, our Planning and Zoning Administrator. We immediately skipped, I'll skip a couple of things on here, but Three Meadows Pond Erosion Control Bid Award. Ms. Sandretto explained that this is to continue with the erosion plan for the Three Meadows Pond, and will install erosion reduction on the rest of the North Bank along the East Bank to the beach area. There will also be at least one additional water access, similar to a kayak launch, installed to allow citizens easier access to water to fish. Ms. Sandretto further explained that the lowest investment was Marquand Construction at $141,933.68, with a 5.6 contingency for a total of $150,000. There being no objections, the committee recommended this 3-0 to council. We had one, two discussion of multi-use paths. Mr. Walter stated that he was involved in the process of creating the original map of the multi-use path and setting some of the priorities. He explained that they outlined all the points of interest throughout the city and looked at ways to connect those through the grid system. The three priorities currently are Louisiana Avenue, Indiana Avenue, and the extension of Echo Junction Road, primarily from Louisiana Avenue West towards the river. Mr. Smith would like to connect our park systems using the multi-use paths. Mr. Walters explained that there are different levels of multi-use path infrastructures, which will take you to proximity of all points of interest, but not necessarily directly there. Mr. Smith was curious, the city had talked to Team COG or Parisburg Township about connecting Caronade to Roachton. Mr. Walters is aware that they have had a conversation with ODOT in regards to the 199 Bridge. Mr. Smith would like to get his hands, or get this in the hands of the service committee as well to see what it would cost a multi-use pass as they work on the roads. Dog park discussion. Mr. Smith explained that PrAC gave suggestions of what parks would be best for a potential dog park location in the city. PrAC's three location recommendations in order are Three Meadows, Orleans, and behind the service building near the water tower. PrAC will also go over Orleans Park Master Plan at a future PrAC meeting, which is going to be discussed in the dog park. Their sole concern with Orleans Park as an option is accessibility. There may be options in the Orleans Park Master Plan that could alleviate this concern. Mr. Van Hoozen likes the idea of Three Meadows because some people could access the park by walking from their homes. Mr. Coleman is inclined to listen to PrAC's suggestion. Ms. Sandretto stated that four separate spaces are recommended, one for small dogs, one for large dogs, and two additional to rotate the turf, because dog parks are really hard on the ground. Mr. Coleman stated the goal for the next committee meeting should be to identify a space within Three Meadows Park that a dog park would fit. An update on the ARPA funds in relation to the playground equipment. Mr. Smith said the ARPA funds in relation to the playground equipment are out for proposal right now. Mr. Walters explained that the proposal items, itemizes the pieces needed, and they can bid acceptable alternatives, as, excuse me, as other companies make similar products. There will be bid specifications for municipal Ford Imagination/Woodland Park and bicentennial wrapped up and out for bid soon. In other business, Mr. Walters mentioned for the Orleans Park Master Plan that the intention is to present this at a committee hall meeting so that all questions may be answered. Our next scheduled meeting will be July 12 at 6:30 PM. And I do have one resolution, so I'd like to introduce Resolution 54-2022 and move the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only. Ms. Math.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 54-2022, a resolution awarding a bid in agreement to Marquand Construction in the amount of $141,933.68 for creation of Rock Channel production on the northern bank of Three Meadows Pond, and declaring an emergency.
All right, I move that Resolution 54-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
All right, that is the end of my report.
Thank you. Planning, zoning, do we want to, it's your call, do you want to move to the other items, which are not, or do you want us to, let's just do planning, zoning?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have no reports specifically, we have a map. We need to get on July 6, 2022, at 5:30 PM. And we do have a resolution before us, 58-2022, to adopt the new land use plan. That plan has been revised, I think all of you saw that, to reflect the discussion we had at our, I guess it would have been the committee of the hall meeting, to, I'll use the shorthand, to adopt the jagged line boundary, if you will, between the commercial development on 25 and the Heights residential community. And the textual discussion also was modified to emphasize that the existing Heights neighborhoods should be named residential, which includes neighborhood amenities that were non-motorized connections. I looked over, I think, again, it says a primary element of the plan, recommendations is to preserve and protect existing residential home sites from the commercial pressures that have and will likely continue along the state Route 25 commercial quarter. As I read it, and as I looked at the map that accompanies the revised plan, to benefit of council and the audience, I believe it's consistent with what we said at our committee of the hall meeting to, in essence, follow the recommendations or thoughts of the Heights residents and preserve the residential character of the Heights to the fullest extent possible. With that having been said, I'll go ahead and introduce the resolution to at least get it formally on the table for discussion. And therefore, I'd like to introduce Resolution 58-2022 and move rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 58-2022, a resolution adapting a new land use plan for the city of Parisburg.
I would then move the Resolution 58-2022 be passed.
Second.
One question, at the committee of the hall, we did talk about that one narrow parcel. And so is that spelled out in this? That is going to be inside that jagged line? Maybe you can answer that.
Yes, thank you for that question. I've got a map here that I'll bring forward to each of you. The assumption that was made on the parcel behind the Taco Bell property that was excluded from that previously is shown on this diagram here. It is classified as commercial, that particular one. So it is the only property to the east of the corporate boundary, the current corporate boundary that would be zoned, or anticipated to be zoned for commercial use.
I have a question while you're up there, if that's okay. Did I read correctly in the master plan that was listed that it is actually calling the Heights a legacy or heritage village? Is it legacy?
It is listed as legacy neighborhood currently, yes.
Any other questions? No, roll call.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
End of report.
Thank you very much. And thank you for everyone from the Heights community for putting on this project. It wouldn't happen without your contribution. You're welcome to stay. If you want a hold, if anybody wants to leave, we could, just a few seconds, if you want a chance to leave, but if you want to stay, you're welcome to stay.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to note that there were a few of us council members that attended the groundbreaking ceremonies at the Heights Community Center. And it's just, I just wanted to, you know, say publicly, it was just, it's just a wonderful thing, what they're doing there, and they're going to be adding multipurpose room, a couple of classrooms, and maybe some even more of that. So it's just, it's really exciting to see that and how so many people came together to make that happen, it was just amazing. And so, thanks to everyone involved, including the township and all the donors.
We're all supposed to be here with God, but we don't be all right in Heights?
Yes, yes. Good to go, Brad. It's going to all be good.
All right.
Thank you. Thank you for taking our community and the community center and bringing it through.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move forward. Personnel Committee.
I have, we had a meeting tonight, I'll report on that at our next council meeting, but I did have one piece of legislation that's going to, we're going to put forward tonight, that'd be Resolution 59. And just a little backstory, we kind of moved quickly on this. I don't know that all city councils got emails, but there was a bit of, there's a bit of code language that identifies that we would have one person that is denoted as the Director of Public Utilities. Clearly, with our new hire and the transitory period, we have two. So we just wanted to make sure we're compliant with our code by stating that this is just a temporary position. So I had a resolution created to that, and the administration did a great job in getting that around in a matter of a couple of days. So appreciate that. So with that, I would like to introduce Resolution 59-2022. My copy says 2021, so.
We will correct that before it signs it, sorry.
It's going to be Resolution 59-2022 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only, and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Resolution 59-2022, a resolution permitting the city of Parisburg to temporarily have two Directors of Public Utilities and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 59-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Administration of change.
With the administrative change.
Discussion.
I just want to explain what the administrative change.
Change to 2021.
That's just the year, on our copy, it says Resolution 59-2021. The administration is wanting to change that to Resolution 59-2022.
It's not going to be changed to 3.
Yeah, right. It's going to change to a 2, I just want to make that clear. And again, this is just simply so we're making sure we're compliant with the code.
Roll call.
Mr. Van Hoozen.
Yes.
Mr. Weber.
Yes.
Mr. Fuller.
Yes.
Mr. Coleman.
Yes.
Ms. Matroni.
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy.
Yes.
Mr. Smith.
Yes.
Nothing further to report, thank you. Thank you very much.
Public Utilities. Thank you, Mayor. We did have a meeting this evening, but Corey, I will report on that detail next month. Some legislation for July's city council meeting. I just want to make note to any of the citizens in the Grassy Creek area. Clearly with our new hire and the transition period, we have two. Uh, so we just wanted to make sure we're compliant with our code by stating what, that this is just a temporary position, so I had a resolution created to that. And the administration did a great job of getting that around in, in the matter of a couple of days, so, appreciate that. So, uh, with that, I, I would like to introduce Resolution 59-2022. My copy says 2021, so.
We will correct that before it signs it, sorry.
It's gonna be Resolution 59-2022 and move that the rules be suspended to allow for its reading by number and title only and to dispense with the second and third readings.
Second. A rule call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 59-2022, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a roof along Echo Junction Road and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 59-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Rule call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 59-2022, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a roof along Echo Junction Road and declaring an emergency.
I move that Resolution 59-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Is this how we're talking about snow now? Uh, rule call.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 58-2022, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a roof along Echo Junction Road and declaring an emergency.
I'd like to move that Resolution 58-2022 be passed as an emergency measure.
Second. Discussion. Rule call.
Mr. Fuller?
Yes.
Mr. Coleman?
Yes.
Ms. Matroni?
Yes.
Mr. McCarthy?
Yes.
Mr. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Van Hoozen?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Resolution 58-2022, a resolution authorizing the purchase of a roof along Echo Junction